Good evening, everyone. I'm Chad Dustin and I own multiple properties throughout the city of Mount Sterling. And tonight I've got four different items of business and we'll try to go through them pretty quickly. They're on two pages, so it shouldn't take too long. First, I'd like to say thank you for changing your policy. I remind people to come to the meeting and not be on the agenda to speak. I was told otherwise.
Oh, let me correct something. You are on the agenda. And the group that was here that was interested in the Sunday ordinance, that ordinance was on the agenda, so any time that you have something on the agenda, then it may be a good strike.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Detective Page. So the first item of discussion tonight is a proposal of a Facebook page for city government. I've met privately with several council members about this. And my thoughts on this are, in this day and age, it's important that city government embrace the efficiency of the internet. And our city government Facebook page can be used to distribute a digital copy of each city council meeting's agenda. I see that being, you know, the easiest way to get the agenda out to the public is just upload it as a PDF document a week or two before the meeting. That way, the public, you know, knows what's going to be on it. They like to come to city council, voice their concerns, speak during that item of their hand. The problem that I have right now is the agenda seems to come out on Friday preceding the meeting, and there's, the council members have very little time, if any, to review it. I've heard that several council members have shared with me. And the other thing is that, you know, how does the public get a copy of this agenda without having to physically come down here and pick it up? So I just think that would address that concern. Also, the Facebook page can be used to share a video link each month to that month's meeting, as well as to share links to archived video recordings of past meetings. And most importantly, it can be used as an additional communication channel for taxpayers, landowners, and business owners of the city of Mount Sterling, Kentucky. Other local government entities have already embraced the internet and have their own individual Facebook pages, including the Mount Sterling City Police Department, the Mount Sterling Montgomery County Tourism Commission, the Mount Sterling Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, and numerous businesses and media organizations, including our number-one source of news for our city, the Mount Sterling Advocate Newspaper. I propose that we appoint a member or multiple members of our city council to establish our Mount Sterling city government Facebook page prior to our next monthly meeting held in October. And I'd like to open for discussion and see approval of this proposal by city council members at this time.
I've got one problem. If you want this two weeks before the meeting, what happens if something comes up and it's been two weeks and it's not on the minutes? We can't bring it up.
Well, Matt, it could be five days before. Just a little more time than...
We will take, we will take it all the way up until Thursday about noon. And we do have things to change. Matter of fact, I think the Allison Report's the one that came up right at the last minute. We can't, we can't give you an agenda until we have all of the items in it. So council members don't even get this until Friday, and it goes out at Friday at noon. So there's no way that we can anticipate that people need to be on the agenda until we have the items before. Janette's very good and diligent about getting them out to the council members. We do have a copy of your city audit when we pick them up. As far as the television of televised council meetings, this will be on channel 306 on your cable. It is KRCC, which is a regional cable television that several cities, Winchester, Memphisville, Mount Sterling, several take advantage of this. And you may view these meetings in their entirety on this channel.
What time?
It's different times.
That's actually the second item I was going to get to, but as far as, I mean, can we open for discussion, the council members, you know, by having a Facebook or government page, where can we be more involved in our city government?
I'm all for, I mean, think about it, because you can post a agenda as it grows, and then the final agenda wouldn't be said until that Thursday. But I mean, there's so many things that we could make more transparency. And I think the more transparency we have, the better off we are about any issue or anything going. You're talking to somebody here who's never been on Facebook in my life.
Yeah.
And don't give a hoot if I am right, but that's me. I don't, you know, we, we had a lady help us here, a doctor's wife years ago, that had a webpage and did things and took us into the 21st century, but she's not with us anymore. And I don't know, it's just sort of, I don't think we're, there's some high-tech people sitting here, but it ain't complete. But I am for it.
Well, I share with you, I just think that it, it is probably not an avenue, I don't want to see it turn into another topic, and I know that at one time there was a Mount Sterling on there, and it was not a good thing, because it wasn't very negative, it wasn't a positive, it wasn't about empowering citizens or making Mount Sterling a better place to live. It was a mess.
I think the previous page was used to show, you know, four hundred pictures of what our code enforcement board was doing. Is that, is that right?
Well, that showed up on there, but I don't think that was the orig- that wasn't the original intent.
That wasn't the original.
If that wasn't the original intent, then I would call it otherwise, that was the purpose of our code enforcement for sharing four hundred photos.
It's a long time before the code enforcement board was established.
I don't know. It was on there. I don't know.
Okay.
But that's my concern.
Okay. So if you would request it be moderated?
I don't even, I don't, I just don't think it's a good venue for...
I think if they post agenda, that's good, but I don't think there needs to be a discussion other than in here, what we're going to do for the meeting.
But actually, it's not, you have discussion other than right in this chamber. Two members can't even talk to each other legally. So it has to be in this chamber.
Have it posted. If you see something you want to talk about, come to the meeting and air your, your thoughts.
Okay. So we'll use it then for one-way communication to start, and then serve?
Yes.
It might not be the proper venue for it. It might be something else.
Well, my thoughts on Facebook is, the world's already there, you know, so let's go where the people are.
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of people that are on Facebook.
The only thing is, somebody's going to have to be responsible for this page, and it's going to be responsible for what's said. And I can tell you one thing, it is not going to be me.
Nor me.
I have no time to put the faces to the camera. You know, I've got work to do to write and phone calls, and so that's going to be an issue that you're going to have, so...
Okay.
Next.
So we can, we can do it? We can tell the people that we're interested?
We'll talk about it.
Don't think about it.
Well, next you're talking about.
All right. So the second thing out of business, proposal of a YouTube channel for city government. It is not the necessary for city officials, council members, taxpayers, business owners, and landowners of Mount Sterling to reference videos of past city council meetings. We're presently distributing our meeting recordings to the local cable company who runs it on a loop for a limited amount of time. While this is a good thing, and certainly something we should continue providing as a service to our community, it thus poses several problems. First, it requires the viewer to be a subscriber to the local cable network. Many people in our area who not subscribe to cable, and our community members traveling outside our area for pleasure or business, and/or residing outside our area, have no means available to access the programming at their convenience. Second, only the past meeting is shown, and it runs in a loop, meaning that there is no set time for it to be viewed. Viewer must wait for the meeting recording to play, do not fast-forward, rewind, or pause any section of the recording. Third, it is cumbersome and inefficient to locate the few meetings from several months ago and years past. The archiving of our city council meetings on an online streaming service such as YouTube or Vimeo addresses these three concerns. Other city governments are now archiving and some doing live streaming of their city council meetings. I've spoken with Tab Patterson, gentleman in charge of editing our video recordings and publishing them to the local cable television network, and Mr. Patterson said he would be happy to help with the publishing of each meeting to Vimeo. Vimeo is a service similar to YouTube and preferred by Mr. Patterson, as he presently uses and prefers it to YouTube. He said his organization has a paid Vimeo account. They have a free service and a paid service. Says that we can use it at no additional charge for our videos. However, he would need to charge us for his time publishing the video, and his fee to do so would be fifty dollars per recording. Based on this rate, we can implement this much-needed and value-added service for the entity at an investment of only six hundred dollars annually. While this sounds like a fair offer, I advise we use YouTube instead of Vimeo, as YouTube is the more popular of the two, and now fully integrated with most mobile devices prevalent of our today, including the iPhone, iPod, and iPad, and as well as newer internet-capable televisions being sold by such mainstream retailers as Walmart. Based on my conversation with Mr. Patterson, I'm leading to publish our meeting recordings to YouTube at the same rate. And thus, if we appoint a member of our city council to follow up on Mr. Patterson and implement this much-needed service prior to our next monthly meeting if possible, I'd like to open for discussion and see approval of this proposal by city council members at this time.
Well, number one, if this was considered, it takes, it takes a budget vote to do something like this, and that can't happen tonight.
Okay.
So I mean, if you're talking about expenditure money, we have to, we have to amend the budget, and right now, the budget's pretty darn thin.
Okay.
Well, I'm not saying it's not a good idea to get it out there some way, but you're talking about everybody's got YouTube. I don't even know what you're talking about. Last thing I want to do is be on YouTube. I'm going to tell you right now, I don't want to be on YouTube. I don't know where this need is. I never have had, I've been sitting on this for eighteen years or so. I've never had anybody want to look. Never had anybody want to look, unless it's to cause trouble. And that wouldn't be advantageous to city of Mount Sterling. I don't think everything we do, you can't take something that we've done eight years ago and go look at it and bring it in here today and say, "Look what you did," because you're not going to know what happened between eight years ago and today. There's a lot of things that, this is nothing but trouble. This is nothing but trouble.
If every council member's compliment is that it would be a nice service to be able to look back on past meetings.
I disagree with them totally.
And see what was said by them.
I just truly disagree with them, because you don't, you can't go back and look at anything in history and just stop right there and take it, because you can take everything out of context.
If they keep their minutes, that's all they got to do.
We've got minutes, and that's all they have to do is go look at our minutes? Is that not correct?
Yes.
They're on file for umpteen years?
I don't think you're pulling that.
They never go away?
No.
I bet we wish, so we have minutes of meetings. You know, I don't want to be on YouTube. Not me.
Because Mr. Patterson is employed by KRCC, so he's one of the same. I know Pat Patterson.
Well, he said that he can do, he said he's doing it for other governments, it's, you know, I mean, it's a good service for the people to let go, and attending these meetings there has to be this president.
Give the effort. Come on down.
Do you know some of the other cities or counties that have done this? Have you ever not researched?
I wouldn't say it might not be an avenue to go, but it takes monetary expenditure, and you can't do that just like that.
If we can do it, it didn't cost city government anything? Would we get some support for maybe them?
Well, you know, I, I've got a problem with cold-turking the council here.
That's fine. I mean, yeah, just have some discussion on it then.
It's true.
All right. All right. The third item, I'd like to have some, have some pictures I'd like to distribute for the third item. It's a blacktopping of a city-owned street, Skyview Drive, and the South Ridge subdivision. There's ten photographs here that have blown up. We can see the condition. And this is one of the, one of the situations where it would have been very beneficial for me as a taxpayer to be able to look back and see what was said in the prior meeting, because there were some things that were said in a prior meeting where this issue shouldn't even become an issue. And I had to bother to disturb someone to pull that information from one of our recordings. I'd have to have it done myself. So the third thing, blacktopping of the city-owned street. I, along with my fellow landowners, are properly located in Phase Three of South Ridge Subdivision. Formally request that the city-owned street of Skyview Drive be blacktopped next month, along with the list of other city-owned streets be blacktopped that were approved during August city council meeting. As depicted in the pictures being passed around, you can see the dire condition of the roadway. The deteriorated condition of our street is negatively impacting the rentability of our income-producing properties, and thereby also negatively impacting the assessment value of our properties, which results in reduced city revenue, as well as reduced revenue for our county and its other special taxing districts. As multiple parts of landowners, Skyview Drive, and I have several other landowners here in Ridge with me tonight, we have received numerous complaints over the past two years from our tenants about the much-needed state of repair. We feel at this time the roadway is now hazardous and not safe to drive on, as there are holes large enough to swallow the tire of the vehicle, and bridges tall enough to cause significant damage to the underherage of vehicles passing over it. I would like to ask at this time for our city council members to make a motion to open for bid the repair and blacktopping of Skyview Drive and the bid amounts, let's see, in the first reading of the repair and blacktopping bid amounts be added to the agenda of our October meeting if possible.
Shannon, I guess I'll probably be the most person to deal with this. This is an issue basically with planning and zoning. I know that, I think we talked about in February of 2011, and since February 2011, you know, we've, we've discussed this at length, the planning and zoning. We have been making contact with the developer, because as of right now, and not going into a lot of detail, because it would take two hours to explain it all, but we have had contact with the developer, which is Cape Verde on several occasions, and we actually talked about it last Monday night at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we have a letter with a copy, you know, if you're talking about copies, but they were sending a copy of the meeting that was in August of 2011 to the developer for their review based on the comments that were made. And we're trying to work with the developer, because, you know, when developers develop subdivisions, it's, it's ultimately their responsibility to provide adequate streets for the subdivision.
Before the city accepts it.
Right, right. And, you know, with the economic downturn, a lot of the developments that were started about four to five years ago are having trouble. They're having trouble finalizing their developments because they can't sell lots. This has never really been a big issue for us until the last three or four years because of the economic downturn. Most developers have been able to, you know, finalize the development within five years. We get letters of credit, all those kinds of things, and I know a lot of this doesn't make sense to a lot of people.
Was there, have we actually due the letter of credit yet? Just because I was worried there was a letter of credit.
There is a letter of credit, but based on the review of the tape, which I have been informing about, and that we're sending to the developer, you know, they had said at that point in time they were going to, going to take care of it. They've also told us some other issues that without, you know, breaking some information that they provided to us, because that's their own personal information with their contractors and everything, there's an issue there too. So, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission is on this issue. We're trying to get it resolved. We're trying to do it in the, in the sense where the true person, the true entity that's required to do this is the developer to do this, and we're trying to work with them. You know, if we just go and cash the letter of credit, let me catch, if we go and cash the letter of credit and pave these roads, the city's going to be out of a lot of money. And it's, you know, and again, if the city's out of money, it goes to your taxpayers. Our goal is to get the responsible entity to do what they were, they said they would do, and we are working on it, so.
Okay, all right.
We talk about it regularly, and, you know, we're trying to work with them.
Is there a, do we have a timeline or anything?
Well, we've sent, I've got a letter drafted for, for the Planning and Zoning chairperson to sign, to send to, to the developer. I've not been able to get with him, but there's, it's asking that they come to the next meeting so we can try to get this resolved.
Thank you very much for that. The concern I have is, was the city, I guess, illegitimately accepted this by...
I don't think it was illegit, it was a mistake of fact, because what happened is they have several phases out there.
Correct.
And in certain parts of the phases, they haven't done their final surface. We went through the steps, had it checked and everything, and when the, but when the description was given for that part of South Ridge, it was an incorrect description, and everybody that's involved is, is on the same page on that, that issue. You know what I'm saying? Everybody agrees that the description was incorrect, but of course, you know, that's not the attorney that drew the document up's fault, because we don't go out there and measure. I, I mean, my job isn't to go out there and measure, are these measurements correct? I rely on the other individuals, that it's their expertise. And so everybody's in agreement that that the, the description is incorrect, but we're trying to get it fixed versus...
Okay. As long as it's fixed, I mean, that's our concern, that's why the group, you know...
We are working on it.
The developer shouldn't, shouldn't pay for it, you know, if that's what they gave the word. So, fourth item of business, final one, is the compensating rate for real personal property taxes of the city. We found ourselves in one of the toughest economic times since the 1960s. Now is not a time to raise taxes on the working family. Families today are deciding between whether they pay for insurance or home-cooked meals for their family. The rise in cost of fuel for families commuting for work and play has further increased the hardship impacting our great community. Based on past year's increasing tax assessment base, it would be a poor decision to increase taxes. By choosing the compensating rate, this will produce an already increased amount of revenue for our city. And I think that's something the public isn't clear on, is the compensating rate is the same amount of revenue as the preceding year less new property. So when we choose, as the special taxing district, which the city is, the compensating rate, what we're saying is that we're going to raise at least the same amount of revenue as the preceding year. And when there's new property coming on the list, in other words, when our assessments are going up, the tax rate itself should be coming down. I'm working on the investigation that I'll be at a future meeting to discuss, but at this one, I just kind of wanted to open the door to that and, and say a little bit about it. Taking into consideration the new revenue that we generated from our Sunday sales of alcohol, which I believe was just passed, and you can see additional revenue is not necessary at this time. Based on the increased real property assessment amount of $5,791,250 between 2011 and 2012, when we chose the compensating rate, or if, when we choose the compensating rate, we will already see an increase in city revenue. It is not necessary for us to choose the optional 4% increase above compensating rate, and doing so would be a further hardship to landowners and business owners alike, especially concerned as it relates to the current economic hardship that we're already all in. I'd like to ask that the four council members who voted no to this tax increase in August's first reading, vote no again. And I would also like to ask that the four council members who voted yes to this tax increase reconsider your votes in light of this new information. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right.
Okay. We're just fortunate tonight to have a visitor with us tonight that knows about these tax rates. He's the expert. He's the man that knows. And Matt Frolik, I appreciate you being here tonight, and thank you for bringing Robert with you. And if you would, would you address this for us, please, and tell us how this is done and how we arrived at these numbers?
Appreciate it, Mayor. As the mayor said, my name's Matt Frolik. I'm a local government advisor to the Department for Local Government. I primarily work with counties, but within our job structure, we also do some other things. And one of the things that I've been doing for the last seven years at the Department for Local Government is calculating taxes for all 120 counties and any white county taxing districts. The law requires us in our office to calculate a compensating 4% rate for all those districts. The law also says you may provide technical assistance to cities and special districts, which is something we do as well. Primarily, the one thing that we do is we provide an Excel spreadsheet as a form that allows any of those cities and special districts to input their assessment and taxes, taxes into that, and it will actually calculate for you the compensating 4% rate. Typically, that's the easy part. The more difficult part is explaining what that is actually telling you and how you're getting there. And that's really where our technical assistance comes into play. We also go around and do presentations whenever I ask at conferences, actually, the presentation for the Kentucky League of Cities Municipal Clerks Association recently. Mayor, am I exact sure if you want this as a Q and A, or how you want to go about handling, handling this, or you want me to go through and explain how the actual tax rate process works?
If you would just explain some of the half-tax rates actually.
How the process works is, your local PDA, county PDA, assesses everything, goes through the entire sentence process. After that, the PDA sends the assessments to the state, to the Department of Revenue, the Office of Property Evaluation. The state certifies that information. And after they certify that information, they send a form to our office, to me, that's called a certification of assessment. And that's the information that I use for all counties to calculate compensating and local tax rates for them. Once the county's assessments have been certified by the state, your PDA is then allowed to submit to the cities and those special taxing districts a recapitulation form, which is essentially assessments for your particular city of your taxing district. And that's the information that you in turn use in our spreadsheet that we provide to calculate the compensating 4% difference for you all. There's actually nine pieces of information that you need that include the prior year's tax rates for real personal property. You also need the real and personal property assessments for both the prior year and the current year. And with that, you add real personal together, gives you a total property figure that's needed. And the last thing you need is new property. The new property is just the prior year's additions minus deletions. So those are the nine pieces of information you need. What you have is nine pieces of information. Essentially, the calculation does itself, which doesn't support them for you. So there are two things, compensating 4%, however, compensating rate isn't really that cut and dry. It's actually has two parts to it, which is where a lot of the issue confusion is. If you look at a lot of the information you have in front of you, the first section would say the compensating rate for 2012, and it references KRS 132, I want to subsection six. That is actually the definition statute of the law for compensating rate. And I'm just going to go ahead and read that statute to you. And the reason I do this is, it's essentially, you're a kid, you're in school, imagining those nicer work problems, a train leaves this station at this time, going this many miles per hour, and this train leaves this station at this many miles an hour. That's essentially what it is, the tax rate calculation. And you're taking the written word of the law and putting it into, creating a mathematical problem out of it. Compensating rate means the rate which rounded to the next higher one-tenth of one cent for $100 assessed value, and applied to the current year's assessments of a property subject to taxation by the taxing district, excluding new property, produces an amount of revenue approximately equal to that preceding year from real property. So what amount of revenue did you all receive last year, and what rate did you have to get that? Essentially, what we're doing is we're taking that amount of revenue that you saw, and we're going backwards. And we want to know what rate would you need this year, at this year's assessments, to give you that amount of revenue?
It's the next one we did last year.
That's it. Pretty, pretty cut and drop. This is where the issue is, and this is where you all are directly impacted. And the second sentence, it says, however, in no event shall the compensating tax rate be a rate when applied to the total current year assessment of all classes of taxable property, producing an amount of revenue less than was produced in the preceding year of all classes of taxable property. Very fun, right? And then this is the thing that we get the most questions about, or none. Ninety percent of our questions are about this second part of the compensating rate statute. Essentially, what we have to do is, we essentially have to check that your revenue for the prior year is not more than the current year. But the wording in this statute, in the first part of this sentence for compensating, and the second sentence, don't match. They're not the same. The wording's not the same. And it's an issue with the language in the law. And we get finger-pointed at, unfortunately, a lot of times, saying that things are being calculated incorrectly. It's not that things are being calculated incorrectly. The issue is the wording in the law. Only this, only the legislature can address that issue. And they have, there have been bills filed in the last two sessions that unfortunately did not get anywhere. I would suspect that there will be a third attempt in the January, when it, when the session opens up, I don't know. But what we have to do is, we have to take the total property for the current year, and we have to compare that to the compensating rate that we calculated earlier to tell us what your 2012 total revenue was. That's pretty, pretty easy. But then we turn around and we compare that to last year's real property at the real rate, plus personal property at the personal rate. And the best way I can describe it is, unfortunately, the way the language is worded you're comparing a banana to an apple plus an orange. But that's what the law tells us we have to do. So in your all's case, you'll see the grand total for 2011's revenue was $993,980. Right, right square in the middle of the tape on the right-hand side. But you have to actually compare that to the 2012 core revenue figure, which came up to $973,347. Well, that's a red flag. That's telling us that last year's revenue would be more than the current year's revenue. And if that's the case, then there's our sentence that says, we now have to calculate a new compensating rate for you all. Because it's saying we're short, we're essentially shorting you up above another calculation. So when we do that, we reference this as a substitute rate, is how we refer to it at the Department for Local Government. Your tax rate through your compensating rate ends up being .245. 4%?
I'll see you tomorrow, please.
One at a time, if we can, keep it orderly. One, two, .254?
.245, right above that.
.245.
And then you have the 4% calculation, which is a calculation that is approximately 4%... 4% more.